Here Kevin, I just want to compliment that movie night that we had back in, I think it was July 23rd. We had a good turnout. We had about three, what did you say, about 300 kids?
300.
It was very good turnout. We had popcorn, a cup of candy. We talked about doing, we talked about doing something again next year. And that night you and I also talked about the Halloween event and right around the corner will be Christmas too. But again, these things are important to get the kids involved with the, with town activities. And I want to especially thank also the recreation department. I know their body and show over there all night long. So again, it was a good event for those that were there with their children. Thank you.
Can you come around draw and look who were there? Just take a look there and see if they can pass it a little better. I know they've been trying and stuff.
Could this be the time to ask about the corrective action plan?
They could ask them.
We passed a resolution to approve a 2012 corrective action.
Point of water, do we have microphones up there, please?
Does that better, does that work? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So we passed a resolution to approve a 2012 corrective action plan. And I have a couple of questions, still sort of waiting for a couple of answers. But while I was looking at the budget, I ended up going back to this document and I asked the manager if he would give everybody a copy of it. So, and I see the order here, so maybe these questions can be answered. I look at the actual corrective action plan and it appears incomplete to me. And also it seems to, the corrective actions seem to sometimes not really line up with what the recommendation was. Now, would this also be called comments? Is that a similar thing to recommendations?
Well, it's a common recommendation section within the order, depending on the recommendations and results.
So like, for example, on recommendation number one, since an interest charge is on delinquent water rents be collected in accordance with the provisions of the township board. Then the corrective action plan says, the water department has made necessary corrections to charging delinquent water rents in accordance with the township board. What I don't understand is the recommendation is to collect and the corrective action is to charge. It appears to me that the charge has already been made if there's something to collect and we're, if, and we're not collecting. Am I reading that wrong?
I think what I think what it's saying, I haven't seen the corrective actions, but I think what they're saying, getting into the coming into the future, the collective, the collective action will be taken in so far as that they will be charging the delinquent, uh, delinquency, well, the delinquency based on the, the town's or, or result tests show that the delinquent interest wasn't being charged, wasn't being charged correctly as it has to be.
But that's not what the recommendation is.
Going forward, it will be charged correctly.
The recommendation says that it will be collected.
Or charged and collected.
Doesn't say, that the interest charges on delinquent will be collected. That means to me that the charges have already been charged.
But they were charged and collected.
Doesn't say that.
That's what it means.
And how come the corrective action plan doesn't have anything to do with collecting?
Uh, we do the corrective action plan.
Then number two is certain unfunded improvement costs be subject to future budget appropriations. Is that a, a common thing to have unfunded improvements?
Yes. When an improvement is initiated and it's outstanding for a period of five years, you should either raise it in the budget or issue bonds to fund the, the organization. It's a house cleaning type of thing.
Cause then on that one, on the information, implementation date, it just says 201. Doesn't say what year.
I would assume that's the date of the ordinance, but that's not funded.
You see why I'm asking these questions, right, Mr. Restorino? The things that don't make sense. So what is the date supposed to be?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's, that's incorrect. It should be either 2013 or 2014. No, that's definitely 2014. I would assume the floor is missing.
Well, is it 13 or 14? See, that's why I'm asking these questions. When I went back and read this.
Yeah, it's nice to be able to ask those questions, but that's the case. You should have given this to us before July 3rd, that I had better and more.
At the last, prior to the last.
I wouldn't respect them if.
Prior to the last meeting.
These questions, that we'll take this back and we turn it back to the county manager.
Prior to the last meeting, I had him be with the manager and ask them some of these questions.
Yeah, I haven't seen him until you just walk back down to him now.
So when I, when I wanted to go over them again, I was told I shouldn't ask them now.
Well, like I said, if you want to ask us again, or you want us to respond, we'll take this back with us. We'll respond to the manager and he can respond to you. Cause that'll be who's gonna answer most questions, but I've had the opportunity to review them.
Then, cause then when you get to the next page, I, I have questions on more of those. Then when you get to the next page, under municipal court, there's recommendations, one, two, three, four, five. There's five, six recommendations, five recommendations, and there's no corrective action associated with it. It's blank. But it has an implementation date of the corrective action where there is no corrective action. In fact, there's seven of those. So my question is, should we rescind the vote on this, send it back and actually have it completed? And then vote out it again to accept it, because it seems incomplete. How do you have a corrective action plan without corrective actions on it? Am I wrong?
Did you hear the council's question?
You should have a comment. I hate us, Kevin.
We should be able to amend it, right? We should be, we have, we have an existing resolution.
We do.
Right? And we, and we want to, we want to amend it based, they're getting answers to it, right?
Well, I don't know if it needs to amend it. I mean, it.
Yeah.
You would amend it, Joe. It's a resolution. We want to add to it.
We want to add to it. That's what you're asking for. You're asking for more information on it. To amend it.
We have, we have a final vote, plus an amendment, both of which have been published. The, the notice to amend was published along with the budget.
That's the budget.
Well, you can't correct something unless it's been adopted.
That's been adopted. We should have corrected on that.
I got no problem with any of these votes.
So what's, so what's, what is the process then? Does it just go back and come up as a new resolution or?
Amend it.
Amend it. So, so you will take this corrective action plan and, or you, or would you want me to go over my questions with you at a later time?
I think you should meet with the manager.
I think the budget needs to be.
Have you with the manager go over them and they'll submit it to our, our auditors, right?
Yeah.
Did we ever get paid by the school district for this gasoline that we're still waiting for? Probably not.
No, we did, council. I think we did, council. We did. We did receive a payment.
Oh, excellent. Good. Are we gonna be doing some paving for them?
That's one.
As part of that bond ordinance?
Okay.
Is it spelled out in there that, that that's part of it, or is it just like included in that, you know? Can you tell me which one that is included in?
Bond ordinance providing for reconstruction of various roads in the by the township of Alton in the county of Esses. Appropriating $2,811,000. Issures of $2,758,000, $263,000 bond orders.
Okay. My question is, it, it talks about the purpose, right? Reconstruct the entire length of carpentry, et cetera. Which, yeah. Does it, does it matter which of those is included in? All these people are asking me if there, if this paving of this high school park lot is gonna occur. So which one of those, A, B, or C? No, but I mean, but which one, which one, which one would include the high school park lot?
Neither. I think it's an open bond or something. So if there's other streets that could fit into that.
If there's money left over.
So says on the top of the heading, and of various roads.
So there's money left over to the back of the roads.
Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the budget.
The court will read the resolution.
Whereas NJSA 48-4-8 as amended provides that the budget as advertised shall be read at, in full at the public hearing, or that it may be read by its title only if one, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget A shall be made available for public inspection in the free public library, if any, of the municipality and in the three county libraries or regional libraries located in the municipality. Or if no county libraries or regional libraries are located in the municipality, the county or regional library in the county in which the municipality is located and the public officer delegated responsibility for delivering copies of the approved budget to such library shall forward to the governing body an attestation that each such delivery unless made and fee copies are made available to each person requesting the same during said week and during the public hearing. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and municipal council of the township that it is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA 48-4-8 as amended set forth in sections 1A and 1B have been met and therefore the budget for 2014 shall be read by title only.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
I second the motion.
Court, hold on.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Utari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. I will intend, entertain a motion to open the hearing on the budget.
I move the budget here in the open.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Utari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as early as nearly as I can determine. Address all questions in the chair. Where necessary, they will refer to individual members of the township council or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before us. School or county matters are not proper subject to this hearing and cannot be discussed for ransom here tonight. I now declare the budget, the public hearing on the municipal budget and the tax resolution for 2014.
Mayor, there's an additional reading required by the court at this time. After you're finished, she will.
Mayor, this is the time fix for the public hearing on the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2014. The budget was approved by the mayor and council on June 10, 2014. Was advertised in full as required by law on July 10, 2014, together with notice of the hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week and a supply is here for anyone desiring a copy.
Detective Frank Antoni wants my name on the court's paper. I obtained a copy from, of the budget from the clerk's office. So I'll be reading and asking questions from that. Number one, according to this document, I see that Mayor Kimball and Councilman Longo are no longer on the council. Says governing body members, there's only five listed.
The mayor's on the right-hand side corner here. Mr. Longo wasn't here when the budget was introduced. He sits over here.
Yeah.
Mayor Kimball in the mayor's office. And then if you go to your right, it has Marie, Vinnie, me, John, and.
He's got five on the list there.
Okay, but the mayor's over here.
Did you amend that?
Oh, why? No. The mayor's on the left-hand side. This is the budget was introduced prior to July 1st. So prior to July 1st, these are the numbers of the governing body. Mayor on the left and the governing body on the right. The final adoption of the budget will include all the members of the governing body and the mayor.
What I didn't see, looking through his budget, every year it's usually in there, the total sets valuation of the town. Is it on some page I may have missed?
The total of the valuation of the town for year 2013.
It's usually in the first several pages. Every year it's in there, last year's and this year's. Why not? Do we have this year's and last year's sets valuation? For it to be in the budget.
Well, it's not required to be in the budget, but we do have the total sets value for 13 and 14. The total says value for 14 was $2,684,979,652. The two, the total says value for 2013 was $2,687,319,180.
So we're.
Yeah, we're down.
Down in the sets valuation.
Correct, correct.
On the, on page 3C, there's two nine point ones. One says revenues at risk, there's check mark. One is super storm Sandy, $509,200. What is that? Is that money we received?
That's money we're, we're gonna receive.
We're supposed to receive.
Yes.
For what purpose?
Reimbursement for storm-related cleanup expense.
For what?
Storm-related expenses. It's mainly reimbursement for any damages we had, the equipment, the equipment we used and any overtime that was used.
Do we submit documentation? Have we had that much expenses?
Yes, we had, yes.
And the next item on there is, why is it under revenues at risk?
At the time when the budget was prepared, that revenue wasn't guaranteed. It was, we had a contract in place. Contracts in real estate can potentially fall apart. That property has been sold and closed, so it's no longer at risk.
Wait, wait. I'm talking about the super storm Sandy.
Oh, I thought you moved on to the sale of public properties. Forgive me.
Why, you know, why is that revenue, has it been finalized? Are we getting that money now?
We are getting the money. We're waiting for final approval from FEMA.
So it's, it's not been approved yet?
We've received to date about $375,000, $380,000 of the five, of the five on the.
You received about $375,000?
Correct.
Okay. And the other one, the sale of township properties, $473,000. What properties are there?
That was the one property on the Mill Street site where the age-restricted housing is to be constructed.
What specific feature property?
Everything put together, everything that was described on the deed.
Well, I'll help you out. The, the scene that says from property, at one point, the original subdivision cut it in half. Just about the middle of the parking lot, from Mill Street to almost going towards the railroad. Then you had another subdivision in the last month of the, which stood more land of the front half all the way out to Franklin. What exact parcel are we talking about? Because there was another one, remember from what I asked, is part of lot one, which went all the way to the Little League field.
Correct. You were correct that the original meets and bounds description needed to be modified and there was a requirement for them to go before the board, which they did. And since those changes have been made, the sale of public property would be the parcel that we recently prepared and sold to Franklin Development. And we can give you a copy of the deed that was recorded and filed. In the deed itself would be the meets and bounds description that mirrored what is presented for the planning here.
I can get that from your office?
You can.
And has this money been received?
It has. We have, we have closed. The money's been deposited. We certified funds included.
Well, I go, I know, again, I'll express my opposition to that. And Mr. Murphy don't like when I use the word fraudulently, but that's the way this project went along. And I can remind you.
Been on the budget. On the budget.
That's on the budget.
No, it's not.
The, on page 3C, analysis of compensated absence liability. Again, this is not what's normally presented everywhere. You have the total fund reserve and the total funds appropriated in this year. But you don't have the total unfunded liability total that we see every year in the budget. That's the amount, if everybody retired who's eligible for this money, what's the total liability? Why is it left blank in the chart's budget?
It's $1,625,000.
Page is that, Mr. Com.
3C at the bottom. 3C at the bottom, right, the total reserve fund appropriated.
What is it?
$1,625,331,56.
On page, on page 3C?
3C.
I don't have it. It just says total fund reserves $103,277, 33 cents. And appropriated for this year, $10,000. That's the only entries on this liability. The white, not white, blank. I got the copy from the court.
I think that's what he's referring to, right?
Well, this is why I went to the court office and I got, I got a budget with bunch of blank pages.
Next one.
The other dog. I got the other side of the court so he's got all the papers.
Get that page replaced.
Well, that, that whole, I don't have any of the global for various departments and all that, but this is grown every year. $1,625,000. This is a serious liability on taxpayers in this town. We've already experienced two dramatic instances of how it's hurting the taxpayers. You had to pass a bond order for $350,000 to pay, I think, for 11 firefighters who retired, their unused sick leave. And you had to pass another bond order for $335,000. And now we're sitting with this 1.6 million in unfunded liabilities. This, this has got to stop these, paying these unused sick leave. And again, 23, 24 years ago, I proposed a solution to this.
Okay, okay. I know, this is this year's budget. What we recommend now is, we're in contract negotiations. If it's not stopped, what, what we talked about with the manager is that if somebody retires, we don't fulfill that position until the, the money that's allotted to that individual is, is compensated to them and then retire.
And then we take around the staff, you know?
Well, yeah, but six of one, half of those and the other. What do you want me to do?
Through the J, the auditor and the manager, what does one tax point represent? How many dollars in the budget?
$268,000.
$268,000. So this is roughly almost eight tax points that we got. And the tax point in dollars in our taxes is what?
On the average household?
Yeah.
$8,500.
One tax, no, no, one tax point. One tax point.
These things are on $26, $24. Don't forget, that million six is only if everybody walks out the door at the same time. That's not.
Whatever it is, we owe it. It's, you know, if I was dead, I'm gonna have to pay it in my lifetime. The, the sets valuation. There's another page that, that would be. On sheet ten. Now let's go. Still gotta be sheet nine first. You've got all these programs, safety, safe and secure, as, and aging, the WIC program, municipal lines, alcohol and drug abuse. And you've got 2013 anticipated realizing cash and nothing anticipated for 2014 on my sheet two. And I see there's, there's nothing in it.
It must be missing again. It must be missing again.
What page do you want?
Sheet nine.
Are we on 9A or 10?
9.
9.
Because at the time of introduction, we didn't have any certification of the grants coming in other than those that are here. So between now and either adoption of the budget or throughout the year as the grants come in with certification, gonna check them in the budget as a revenue and offsetting appropriation, because there's no effect on the tax rate. Cause again, it's a revenue and offsetting appropriation.
You know, as the public, you know, we're entitled to get the, you're welcome.
No, no, if we didn't get the grants in yet, they're not in here. So if we don't get the grants, we won't run these programs.
Mayor, by may, for example, on this evening's agenda, the WIC grant is in tonight for $40,000 from East Orange. That's, that's typical of where we get these numbers from. So that one is on the agenda, actually.
I've got 35, 40 years of budgets and this is the first time I've seen all these blanks.
Well, if they're not in, you're gonna get blanks till we get them in. And then you'll get them in.
Then you're not ready to approve the budget.
Yes, we are.
Huh?
You're taking a more conservative view.
And you know this is the anticipated revenue and you're just telling me you don't know the game though.
You're taking a more conservative view.
There's nothing there.
What?
You're taking a more conservative view of your anticipated revenue that way. So what happens if it doesn't get realized? Doesn't that make sense to you?
No.
If you don't, if you don't think it's gonna come in, you're having a more conservative view of the anticipated revenue.
I've been around a long time and, and there's a guy out there on this end, we used to refuse, uh, mayor, excuse me, commissioner McReagan. Well, here's the problem. It's not a conservative view, because if you don't have anticipated revenues in here and you're creating a tax rate and then you do get that money, there's a slosh fund.
But to grant, that would be used for that. It's not a slosh fund. If we get the grant, it has to be used for that purpose.
It's gotta be in the budget.
Yeah, but if you go to page 24, you'll see likewise, there's no appropriation. That's what they're trying to say. If there's no revenue for these grants, there's no appropriation. So that's, there's no effect on the tax law. As grants come in, you'll have a revenue with an offsetting appropriation. So right now, they don't have the ability to spend any of the money for any of these grants because they're not incorporated in this budget.
Why is this year completely different than all the other years? And I, I went through all, the last six years budget, to be fair, I didn't go through 40 years. And all of these blanks never came in the other budgets.
I can't answer them.
Well, you're the auditor.
Well, I'm telling you what the answer is. And the answer is that they don't have certifications of those grants. So without a certification, we can't put them in a budget. Cause if you put them in a budget without certification and you send it down to Trenton, they're gonna send it back to you and say, we can't approve this budget because you don't have the certification for these grants. That's what's happening.
I would assume that because the governor's had trouble getting his budget passed, he didn't allocate these funds for these different governors.
But the word up there is anticipated. And here's a process. If you anticipate, you should know what you anticipate.
Because then if we anticipate it and don't get it, then we'll have a bigger problem.
No, you don't have a problem because there's a process.
Yeah.
It's called amending the budget. It's called amending the budget. If you don't get it, you just amended to delete what you think you get. There is a legal process to handle.
You gotta read the rest of the top sentence. What's the whole sentence, read. Public and private revenues offset the appropriations.
That says it every year, but we have, every year, we have the numbers in there.
Well, they have offsets, because we have the grants. Like I said, this year, they don't have the certification.
Okay, but we don't have the grants. It's not the year, we don't have the grants, so the money's not addressed.
Well, then the public has nowhere-
Well, when we get, we report when we get the grants, and we're looking at the adopted budget.
What are we getting for the clean community program? God, the clean community program, what's in this?
Approximately fifty-five thousand dollars.
Well, why aren't they in there like they always were? I got page after page of blank numbers. That's never happened before.
Well, you're looking at the adopted budget that in the past years. This is only the introduced budget, it's not the final budget. The final budget won't be adopted until September. This is only the introduced budget, which is an estimate. When it's adopted, these may be available or uncertain. So you were looking at past budgets that were adopted. This is an introduced budget, you're comparing apples to oranges.
No, I wasn't. No, I wasn't. Because the day after day introduced a budget, I go down to the clerk and ask for the budget, and she graciously gives it to me. So I have the same reference. I get the budget the day or two days after it's approved for introduction. So don't tell me I get to approve it, and never went after to get a final budget, because all the numbers are in there.
They're not all in there.
They, all the-
He just told you, the state won't approve the budget until it's certified. The grant is certi-, if the grant's not certified, they'll bounce the budget.
Mormon, you come up to my house, I'll give you a cup of coffee, I'll show you all the budget.
That was a past year.
There was never this. Well, yeah, and why is this-
I wanna ask you a question. Why wouldn't we put them in there? We're trying to buy some?
I don't know.
Because they weren't available.
Well, then we can't anticipate it, but you can't prepare the budget, we can't anticipate.
You can't anticipate, that's why we put it in?
Yeah. The, um, with the, uh, the surplus, utility operating surplus, what did you say, that the water you said, oh, yeah, page ten? And we're not, we add the surplus of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand for thirteen, we're not anticipating anything for this year?
Correct.
What is, is there a reason for that? They were not anticipating?
It's not available.
Nothing's available. They were not doing the budget, no, the numbers are available.
No, the numbers are available. There's no excess surplus in the water utility that we can use in general, but therefore, we're not anticipating any revenue for the water.
Well, maybe there's no surplus, because we keep delaying repairing leaks, like I just told last week, the one-
It's the budget, okay.
Well, that's it, we're late to that. You got the leak there for several months now. The other one, by the hydrogen, by Derek King, was five months before he got to it. All that water going down and drained. That's why we don't have any surplus. We're paying north for water that we're allowed to go down the shore, because of delinquency in repairing these leaks. And on page, uh, sheet eleven. On the surplus anticipated, we had a million dollar surplus last year, which we used, and we got a million two this year. Can we use part of that surplus to lower the tax rate a point or two?
We're using the whole million two. Last year, we used the million, this year, we're using the million two. That million two is being used to support this year's budget.
Right, so the surplus increased?
Yes.
So that, that was the councilman, Rebel. See, that's how these things happen. You don't have these figures in there, and then you receive more money than anticipated, that's how you re-.
And a grant, whatever you anticipate, you're taking, it's not like this. Come on, boy, those things are bad.
But anticipate law-
Grants are different.
Keep, you know, and then if we get the grant, you could always amend it.
Okay.
All right, the rest of it, I'm gonna get the same answer. There's a lot of blank pages and blank lines in here for the 2014 issue. There's no way you can answer a sensible question if I don't have the numbers. You don't know if they're going up, you don't know if they're going down, because they're blank. So I hope you hold it office, so the public can get a complete filled-in budget that we can truly analyze.
Anybody else wish to speak?
We're the most opposed public here. I have a couple of questions that's appropriate for you. On some of these items, I'm not gonna go through everyone that I have marked off, I just, some things that don't make sense to me, um, I just need clarification. So, for example, on page fifteen C, and I know this is one of the amended items, I know we're anticipating, we have hired a few more police officers than we're anticipating to put a few more on. So I don't understand how, in 2013, we budgeted eleven million, one twenty-eight, eight ninety-three, and this year, we're eleven million, two oh four, we're actually going down, yet we are hiring upwards of eighteen police officers, not much we're adding.
I don't think so.
But then we hire six, we're hiring twelve more, or is it?
We hired four.
Oh, four, and then we're hiring-
Twenty-eight more.
Oh, I thought it was twelve, that's what Chief had said.
I think it's twelve, yeah, fourteen.
There's twelve in the budget, but that's not the second, we're gonna hire these twelve.
Whether it's, doesn't matter what the number is. We're gonna hire, we're gonna hire a group of police officers, which is a great thing.
It's fifteen C.
Fifteen C, but the, the budget for salary and wages went down.
To answer your question, Councilman, we had some retirements of high-salary officers, uh, captains.
And no coverage on it.
And we have four, the chief included, four employees that are on payroll, but they're under the category, okay? But the twelve that he included, he only began for the last quarter of the year, so that's how their salary is not included entirely in this budget.
So will we see a bigger impact in the next budget?
Potentially, but he also has anticipations of retirees for next year on a much higher salary. If a captain were to retire at a higher than fifty thousand dollars, and we hire a rookie at forty-six thousand dollars, you're hitting the equivalent of three to one. So if you have two captains and a lieutenant, or higher salary officers going out, that's how you can bring in these officers.
So a captain retires, big old captain, they're not coming in at that same high salary?
No.
Well, we don't always hire person for person anyway, right?
Well, it's the same went down, why not three hundred thousand? Thirteen was eleven million, five forty-nine, and fourteen is eleven million, seven eight.
Are you looking at page fifteen C, salaries and wages?
Yeah.
You're looking, you're looking at the total police department budget, I'm looking at the salaries and wages.
Salaries and wages were eleven, one twenty-eight, and this year, it's eleven, two eighty.
Well, it's being amended to eleven, two oh four, nine fifty-two, according to the, right, to the, there's some amendments on the resolution, there's some amendments.
You also have to look at what was spent, though, if you spent ten million R. It was eighty-two on the spend.
So then eighty-two goes back in.
But eighty-two is, you know, available for something.
I, I just wanna, I just wanna understand. I, I have-
Really, what you should put down is the pay-to-charge column compared to the appropriate.
All right, so then, all right, so then last year, eleven, one twenty-eight, eight ninety-three was budgeted, actually spent was ten, nine, sixteen, eight, thirty-six. There was some money left over.
You also paid for money out, you look at, thirteen was eleven, one forty-eight, and then it went to ten, nine ninety-eight, and then we only spent ten, nine, sixteen.
I just wanna make sure that you're all right. So then, does the same hold true on the fire department, on page fifteen D?
Yes.
Same, same scenario, some firemen, we had some, some retirements as well, and, right?
What's helping us now is that the people retiring are retiring, and they have longevity.
They don't have longevity.
The new people coming in don't have longevity, or the people moving up might not have longevity too, so that's, that's a pro reduction in our-
The other one, I'll just cut right to the chase, is on Public Works. The overall budget looks like it went up about seven hundred down. And that confused the, which is why I asked those other questions, because the police went down, the firemen went down, or stayed about the same. God bless you. And the, uh, the overall budget went up seven hundred thousand for DPDW, and in some cases, like buildings and ground salaries and wages, went up a quarter of a million dollars. From, from, from what was budgeted on thirteen, on fifteen F. But again, I'm, I'm looking at it real differently now, because 2013 budgeted was seven sixty-nine, four sixty-six, right?
Right, right.
Then we look at pay-to-charge, that's the smart thing to do, is that correct, John? And so that's nine seventy-three, so we were higher than we budgeted.
Right.
Had a couple of bucks left after we transferred. So it went up, but it still only, it still didn't, it still went up, when you compare that, and that's why I asked it, when you compare that to the police and fire department, and I understand now that, you know, the high salaries, et cetera, but that just seems like an idiotic-
Maybe I could help you further with that. With the public works department, instead of forming the workout, in other words, going out for, I guess, uh, the bond, we did it in-house. So that might be higher because of the overtime, but we're saving on the other end, we're not going out for outside work on it.
So if I wanted to know a little bit more detail on that, is that something that you and I could talk about sometime when you have some time?
Absolutely.
You want to stand up, Mike, for a moment? You start off at seven sixty-nine in 2013, but then the last two months of the year, you're allowed to transfer money in, so we transferred approximately two hundred thousand.
So you ended up at nine seventy-three.
And then we spent nine seventy-three.
So the picture is not as bad on, when you look at the individual line here. But still the overall, but still the overall increase is pretty substantial, like compared to the other.
We can't underestimate the fact that you had a horrific winter in January, February, March, and a severe move in additional rock salt cost to the municipality, and those were the walking through in 2015.
On fifteen G, public employees, occupational safety and health, and then it says fire, other expenses. Last year, budgeted was fifty-nine, eight fifteen, paid was fifty-nine, six forty-eight. But this year, we're budgeting a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three thirty-five. What, what are, that's not part of the fire department, I presume, right?
Fifteen G.
Fifteen G.
Ocean Fire. Correct. We received a grant from the federal government, the safer grant, for the new hires in the fire department, and this will include the ocean.
So this is part of their training?
And equipment.
Equipment. I apologize, but it's kind of, kind of new to me, so I just wanna make sure I understand On sheet eighteen, there's an item called prior year bills that looks like it dates back to 2010. Dave Pitney legal for eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven, I guess it was budgeted last year. Is that, would that be something that, I guess, maybe there was a dispute about the charge, or just?
Well, no, Dave Pitney handles, and has seen a lot of different things for the township they do, do more esoteric tax appeals, they did two fairly complicated litigations for us, they've done quasi-criminal litigation. I don't know exactly what that number is, but, um, I, I don't know exactly what that particular bill is for. It could be an accumulation of a couple, you know?
When you see the two thousand and ten next to legal, Councilman, that references that the appeal cases date back to two thousand and ten.
So that means, that means, so the project probably expended money in there.
If they have to go, the federal case in tax court in 2014, it has a two.
And we don't, and we don't anticipate having to do that again, I, I suppose, because there is nothing for 2014. I guess that's something the law department, that as it comes, you decide what you gotta do?
My expenses in the law department are predictable to an extent, but sometimes they're just not. You never know what kind of a litigation is going to be. What I will say is that, in all humility, I think we do try to control the monies that we pay to outside counsel, and I think if you compare them to other agencies within the county, or, for example, the Board of Education, you would find it, we do try to control, of course, sometimes they just, they go up hot.
It's not a complaint or criticism, I'm just curious.
No, no, I know, I know, I wish I could give you a better answer.
No, no, you gave me the right answer.
I don't have a better answer.
You gave me the answer, the answer she answered. All right, so this one here, I'm not sure. Page nineteen, under statutory expenditures, so I see that on the public employees retirement system, last year, we budgeted one day, one thirty, three thirty-nine and change, and that's what we spent. But this year, we're budgeting a million, eighty-six, six forty. And the next line, social security, last year, we budgeted eight hundred, we expended eight, forty-six, six thirty-three, and this year, we're budgeting nine hundred. And then, under police and fireman retirement, four million, five, fifty-seven, three forty-nine was budgeted last year, we spent that amount, but this year, we're, we're less. So here's what I don't understand. Why would we budget more for social security and less for those two? Are we fully funding those pensions, or are we, are we not?
The pension bills come right from the state, the pensioner bills. This year, they had a modification in the pension bill, so they actually did go down for both the PD RS and the police and fire.
So even though-
The social security is based on seven point six five, or the total-
So it's not, it's not the same way?
Right, no, it's two different levels.
So we are fully funding these pensions?
When you say fully funded-
Well, meaning, whatever we are, whatever they're telling, whatever they're asking the board, we're giving it to them. We're not, like, giving them less.
No, no. But they lost them.
So they did that a few years ago.
Well, that has happened before. Didn't the governor do that recently?
Yes.
Well, the town did it under Whitman.
Yeah, for years. Almost so 2008. I suppose on page twenty-four, that it's a similar situation as Mr. Frank Antoni was describing, where we just don't know, yeah, right, these are general appropriations, public and private programs offset by revenues? So these mirror the-
These mirror, if you look at page nine, page twenty-four, they should mirror each other. The only difference will be is that they're like a match, some grants require a ten percent match, that would be the only difference.
And that would be the same thing on twenty-four A, just like you said before.
Right.
On twenty-four B, we have AFM grant for firefighters, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, two eighteen, and another grant for thirty-three thousand, four eighty and thirty-seven, twenty, and then something for the Office of Emergency Management. What is that? Is that, I know that the, the fire chief was talking about, and he was being congratulated for bringing that big grant. Is that it? And what is that for?
Of course, I know there's a big grant, so it won't set these new firefighters coming out.
And that goes towards salaries?
I mentioned to you, thirty-seven, twenty, that's a ten percent match for the grant for your fire.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. Emergency authorizations, page twenty-eight. Last year, we budgeted one million, two forty-seven, ninety-four, paid that much, this year, we're budgeting nothing. Is that typically the case? Because you don't know whether you have emergency-
Since 2012, we had an emergency, which has to be raised for the sub-40.
So that's like that one's-
We didn't have any emergencies, so there's nothing to raise.
Nothing, okay. And then what about the special?
Special emergencies, I like to do. Special emergencies, I like to do revow, and I forget the other items.
Yeah, the second one, special emergency authorization, is five years.
Right.
So that went up from a hundred thirty-six thousand to three hundred eighty-six thousand and a half.
Okay, one thirty-six, six, one thirty-six, six.
No, but there was an amendment that came in the package.
Okay.
Went up to three hundred.
They allow us to raise the tax of yours, if we've done the last year over three years.
And that's something we expect that we're going to definitely spend. And the, I think the last question I have is on page thirty-eight. At the bottom, where it says dedication by rider, and without reading the whole thing. It appears to me that this is where monies that are collected for different types of programs have to be dedicated to those programs. Is that correct?
Correct. You have to have a pool of new divisions to put those in, of course. You would have to adopt the resolution requesting that the money be budgeted through this section. What's that called? It's in the trust fund, it's called a dedication by rider.
So.
It'd be like if you wanted to have a donation for a park fence, for example. You only spend that money for the park fence.
It's almost like, it's almost the way a grant is treated.
For five hundred, you only collect the four.
But it's treated similarly to a grant.
Correct.
So let me use, for an example, ones that we all are somewhat familiar with, like the nine eleven park donations, Soho Sitting Park. I see all of these different things, donations for celebration of public events, et cetera, but I don't see a line in here for just a party. And I kept hearing that there's money still, you know, put away somewhere for just a party. So is, is there an account with money dedicated only to be used for just a party?
Yes.
Is it just an oversight that it's not included in?
No, I think it's part of the celebration, celebration of public events. And if you get the annual financial statement, annual financial statement, there's some money in the trust section for just a party.
So within the donation for celebration of public event, it's called out as a separate line item within that account. All right, that's it. Sorry for giving so much time.
Mayor, I move to hear him before.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the amendment to the budget. Court will read the resolution.
Resolution to amend the municipal budget for the year 2014. Whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2014 was adopted on the tenth day of June 2013, and whereas the public hearing on that budget has been held as advertised. Whereas it is desired to amend said budget, approved budget now, therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Belleville, County of Essex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2014 be made. Eight, general appropriations. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within caps from fifty million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars to fifty million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And total general appropriations for municipal purposes excluded from caps from seven million, seven hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents to seven million, nine hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Be further resolved that three certified copies of the resolution to be filed in the office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for the certification of the 2014 local municipal budget so amended. Be further resolved that this completed amendment, in accordance with the provisions of NJAS forty-eight, colon, four dash nine, be published in the Star Ledger in the issue of August twenty-second, 2014, and that said publication contain no dispublic hearing on said amendment to be held in the municipal building on September ninth, 2014, at six thirty p.m.
Mayor, the adoption of this budget has been postponed, as the amendment has to be advertised in the newspaper, and also has to be approved by the Division of Local Government Services.
We need a second.
Second. Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did.
I'm sorry, thank you. Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
A resi, a resolution to amend the 2014 budget?
Second.
We just did.
Motion to.
This is your motion postponed adoption?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Now a resolution to amend the 2014 budget, right?
They did it.
They did that? And the temporary emergency resolution?
That's what you're doing there.
Fine, okay. I move the temporary emergency resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
A letter of resignation received from Marie Carroll from the Wentworth Board. The request received for, for, I'm sorry, for permission to hold a Glock forty at Malone Avenue between Linden Avenue and Floyd Street for Saturday, August thirtieth.
Mayor, I want your move.
Second.
Court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
One, bond ordinance providing for reconstruction of various roads inhabited by the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating two million, eight hundred eleven thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, six, two hundred and sixty-three bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Your motion, open for public hearing.
Before you speak, I just want to let you know, this motion is being defeated tonight. So anybody want to speak on it?
Second.
My question is, is this the. Okay.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, Clayfield Gershio, Eighth Road Street. Is this the same ordinance that's being introduced on first reading? Yes, that's what I just said, we defeated this one because we didn't have the money in the budget properly, so we're going to introduce, defeat it and introduce it again. For the same amount of money?
Right, the same money.
Okay. That's all.
Can we know what street's there?
Yeah, it's.
Reconstruction of the entire, like, the Carpenter Street, entire, like, the Hunter Street, Ralph Street, Drawlman, Wallace, reconstruction of Holm Street in the Valley to Main. Hoover Avenue. Including the work and materials necessary. Reconstruction of the entire land of Long Street. Entire of Clinton Street. Those are streets.
Motion closed.
Did you make your motion close?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Ordinance for second and final reading. Bond ordinance providing for reconstruction of various roads inhabited by the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating two million, eight hundred eleven thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Move for final adoption.
Second.
Court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
Longo?
No.
Nutari?
No.
Robel?
No.
Strumalober?
No.
Ordinance is defeated.
Bond ordinance providing for the reconstruction of various roads inhabited by the Township of Belleville in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating two million, eight hundred eleven thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Move for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Two, an ordinance to amend ordinance number three, 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 creating personnel positions and adopting class of tuition and compensation plans.
Motion for introduction.
Second.
Court call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Cosarelli?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nutari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Sir.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and councilman on golf, and the board of education meanwhile this evening, to the citizens that are there. What I'm trying to find out, by what the state monitor said last night about a four million dollar deficit in one year. What, is, does the council oversight the Board of Education? So whatever they decide, they decide. If the budget is denied, then does it come to you?
Yes.
Was the budget denied last year?
They moved the election from April to November, so there was no budget.
So then the only ones culpable in this are the.
The Board of Education.
Former and active members of the Board of Education.
Last two years.
So that was four million dollars in one year.
I think it's four point eight.
Mr. Egan said that the, his one thing was to ask the state for a four million dollar loan and pay four hundred thousand a year for the next ten years.
Right, but the four hundred thousand they're paying a year for the next years come off the money they would get regularly and paid from schools.
Right, so we're shortchanged four hundred thousand. Right, so all the schools are shortchanged four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Well, we're shortchanged four hundred thousand.
Right, so either we raise taxes to put the money back, because four hundred thousand a year, I'm sure, is a lot of money.
How does the monitor take steps to reduce the budget, you know, through employees or any contracts that he has in the right here?
Yes, he's been working on that, but I still don't think he's making it for him. What was the other point I was going to try to make? It's just that our schools are in such bad shape. I mean, if you look at number four school, it's infested with cockroaches, it has mold problems, the third floor is closed. I mean, what do we do for these kids? I mean, how could you teach kids in buildings that are over a hundred years old? Is there some way that we find the money to add new schools or so? How is that process going about? I mean, it's costing us more money to run these hundred-year-old schools. It's the inefficiency than it would to.
The only way I could see to get into schools, the Board of Education is going to have to go out on a referendum, and to see if the people of Belleville want to pass that. If not, they have to live within their budget.
So this, that's what I'm trying to say, so the council really has no say over the Board of Education, none whatsoever.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. Since when?
This year.
This year.
This year.
Since April.
And how did that happen? I don't mean to be ignorant, I'm trying to just.
They used to have elections in April, every April. So I guess because there was a, I don't even want to get involved. The Board of Education all of a sudden decided, the Board of Education all of a sudden decided they were going to move the election to November. That would save them two seats if the people that run it, that run and lost, they would still be on the Board of Education. So they moved the election till November, and that was it? The people had no say in the budget?
And once you move that election to November, the townspeople don't vote on the budget, and automatically, it's automatic, whatever.
Mayor, can I make a point here, I think, that it just needs to be, every year, Belleville always had the voters voting on the Board of Education budget. In 2013, it was defeated. There is a statutory, the voters voted down the Board of Education budget. There's a statutory mechanism, once that happens, where the governing body gets a correspondence from the superintendent, and the Board of Education gets the same correspondence. And basically, what the super tells both agencies is that the Board of Education has to supply information within, I believe it's a thirty-day statutory period, so that the governing body can look at what has been budgeted by the Board and make suggestions. So what happened last year, this was voted down, I guess, around April tenth, roughly, that was the board election. So we would have, the governing body would have to act between then and, let's say, May the tenth. The governing body made at least five written requests for this information from the Board of Education. And the Board of Education chose not to be responsive to those requests. When they were finally responsive, it was more or less a stack of documents that everybody had to dig through. We were given some assistance to try to dig through it, but it was, it was very tough. I don't believe the clarity contract was included in that, because clarity did not go out to bid until late, okay, but you really don't. So that was not included in the budget, even though they knew they were sending that out. So what happened was then, clarity is out of their budget, the governing body made some changes, they discussed it with the Board of Education, and the changes went through. But that other item was outside of the budget. Fast forward to December thirty-first. The legislature, Governor Christie signed the bill on January, December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, that permitted the Board of Education to move the election in April. And basically, the theory was, save the town the twenty-five thousand or so that you spent on a, on a April election. So.
You move the election to November.
That's right. So, but when the Board did that, what they were also able to do was shut that April election down to the voters, that would have allowed the voters to once again scrutinize the budget. That's gone now.
So basically, it's like a cartel.
Well, I'm not going to use that word.
Because as taxpayers, I mean, I thought, these are our representation, so we have no representation.
That's what happened, that's how we got the five million in the hole from that.
Well, is that what we're saying? We have no representation when it comes to the Board of Education.
There's only one other mechanism, that's if you have an appointed Board of Education, and that appointed Board of Education will be done by the mayor and council, we don't need the people, but that's, that would take a referendum.
So we're stopped. So we're stopped, so like, once the state monitor walks away, we could just wind up back.
Let's take, I'm going to hear for at least ten years. Ten years. He's been in Jersey City, he's been in Jersey City for twenty-five years.
You know, because you see corruption.
He's not going anywhere.
You see corruption as far as Washington, and it's just, it makes me sick.
I'm sorry, so are we going to finish up?
Yes, I'm going, thank you.
Go ahead. I'd like to thank Councilman Nutari. Belleville, night at the movies was very, was very enjoyable. I talked to quite a few people, and they really, really enjoyed that. Things like that helped to bring our town together, and it was a great, great idea.
That was my idea.
It's good that you have an idea.
That's true.
Joe, you were very thorough with going over the budget, and I hope you're equally as patient with me. I'm a trustee at my church, and, you know, I take my job seriously. I looked up, actually looked up the legal term for what our responsibilities would be. And I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but basically, the general duties at the end of the day is to defend the trust, and also to not profit or have an unfair advantage. It goes back to case law, Keach versus Sanford, and I'll give you a little history on that. Keach was a baby, and Mr. Sanford was supposed to look over Mr. Keach's property, that little infant. And the lease ran out on the property. And Sanford helped himself to renew the lease, but in his name. So years go by, Keach finally sues Sanford, and what happened was the English law, seventeen hundreds. Sanford was required to give back the profits that he made from the land that he took from Mr. Keach. Why am I saying all that? Because I look at, and I've looked at certain things, when we go back to the Board of Ed and the budget, and it appears that there was an unfair advantage or profit which you gained, Joe, from some of the decisions that were made by the board as a whole. And some of the purchases that were done, Board of Ed, to Marange, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. How is that possible? Isn't there a conflict of interest in that regard?
No.
How is it not?
For there to be a conflict of interest, I would like to have a greater interest in the company. And I don't, I have no interest in the company, I'm just a salesman, and the, I'm not even the person who dealt with the school district, I don't have any of those things.
Well, let's say on an ethical level.
That's what I'm talking about.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about dollars and cents, I'm talking about an ethical level. When you do something, and I'm going back to, you know, you do something that is favorable to someone, and maybe won't give back dollars and cents in a material sense, but it puts you in good favor with your employer that a contract, a sale, was done between an entity of which you were a trustee on and your employer. And you don't find that a conflict of interest?
It's not a conflict of interest.
Okay, and these were competitively priced items?
I don't know, 'cause I wasn't involved, however...
Oh, you were involved at the Board of Ed, and...
I was...
You're a trustee.
I never voted on anything to do with them. I was not involved in any of the transactions that went on. And I, the reason I know that it's not a conflict is because I checked. You have to, for it to be a conflict, you have to have a ten percent or greater ownership or interest in the company. I don't.
Okay, so if you're on the board and you decide to create a school sale, and you're getting a commission because you're not a ten percent owner...
I didn't do a sale.
There's no conflict.
I didn't do a sale, no, I'm gonna answer.
Sure.
I didn't do a sale, nor did I collect a commission. I did not collect a commission.
But I'm saying, based upon your analogy, even if you did, it's fine, as long as you're not a ten percent owner.
It doesn't matter, because I didn't. This is not a, you know, I mean, you have to call the New Jersey School Board Association and ask them, what are school ethics commissions, and find out from them if it's a... But I spoke to school boards to make sure that there were no conflicts, so...
Okay, how much of the budget, as it stands now, and I'm addressing this to you, Joe, since you were very thorough with going through the budget, how much of the budget is attributed to the Board of Ed and that aspect of it?
You mean the municipal budget?
Correct. Percentage-wise, in dollars and cents?
I don't really know, Mr. Mayor, I prefer you, because the thing you want, that this is not about the county or the school budget.
If you're asking what, what the school budget is gonna be like, for this year, it's a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents per household.
That means as it is now, this is not gonna be amended, correct?
No, this is only the school budget, that's, this is only the school budget. That's what's gonna be taxed, the county's gonna be taxed. The county taxed about thirty-seven dollars, and the town is coming in with a sixty dollars.
So the school budget basically...
Is almost three times as much.
Okay, I got you. Okay, I'm looking at ethics commission, and in conflicts of interest, no school official shall use or attempt to use his official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for himself, members of his family, immediate family, or others. B, C, no school official shall act in his official capacity in any manner where he, a member of his immediate family, or a business organization in which he has an interest, has a direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably expect it to impair his objectivity or independence of judgment. No school official shall act in his official capacity in any matter where he or a member of his immediate family has a personal involvement that is or creates some benefit to the school official or member of his immediate fam, or his immediate family.
Is this a school board meeting?
No, I'm gonna stop.
Because I, I wonder...
I'm gonna stop right there.
Thank you very much, because I don't understand what this is all about.
I'm asking questions...
You asked the questions, I answered the questions. You asked me about an interest, you asked me about commissions, I answered everything you did. Now you're reading school ethics code. I don't understand where you're going.
Give me a moment, can you just...
No, I don't...
What I could suggest to you, what I suggest...
You could call me, you have my ear, I'd be happy to answer any question you want.
I'm not, I'm not raising my voice, Joe.
I'm not raising my voice, you are...
If you, if you will permit me, I do believe I have more than five minutes.
I think your time is up.
In a clock. In as far as it affects...
The mayor says your time is up.
It affects the town.
If, the only thing I suggest is, if you have a problem...
Make an ethics complaint to the school ethics commission, I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
If you have any other problems, just contact the authorities that you're supposed to contact.
School ethics commission.
It could be the prosecutor, the attorney general, or school board officials.
School ethics commission.
Thank you. First of all, my husband contacted Mr. Esposito a few weeks ago about a part of Mount Rutherford Avenue that was caving in. And he did get other folks up there to put asphalt in. Well, the thing's still caving in. I think it's being underlined, it's, it's not gonna be better, it's still a bit old there. And on Leslie Terrace, there's been a water leak there for the past week and a half that I've seen, and it's coming out like this. I don't know if it's the towns or the homeowners. It's marked off in blue, but the water is running pretty fast. You can look into that. And I wanted to know with the OSHA, do our public works employees have to take the OSHA test? Do they pay for it on their own? Well, I think they should, my son-in-law just had to get a job where he was, for the summer, working for a contractor. He had to take the OSHA test, took it online, it cost him money out of his pocket. And I'm sure these employees make a lot more money than he does. And I don't see anything wrong with them paying to get the certification from the state if they want the job. And I think that should be negotiated in the upcoming contracts, if there are any, because we can't afford to pay for any of this anymore. Excuse me, I have to go.
I know, I didn't know.
And I just wanted to bring up one thing more. A few meetings ago, Mr. Kimball made a remark that I was against basketball courts in this town. But let me tell you something, Mr. Kimball, I have never, ever been against anything that was for the children of this town. And I want to tell you, the sidewalks around school lane were brought, my father fell, he got cut up, I lobbied for them, they put new sidewalks in. I lobbied for the blinking lights around the schools, they put them in. The streetlights, which this council told me couldn't be put in, on Home Street and Union Avenue, I called Joe DiCenseno, he helped me, and we got them put in. The basketball courts, I have lobbied for them for a long time, but it was said they didn't, the council said they didn't want them in because of the element that was coming in to play on the basketball court.
I don't, I don't know.
And while you look back at your, your... Because the people that play on those courts live in there. I raised...
I know, that's not true either.
I, well, a lot of them did. My kids did, and when you took them down, they had to go to Nutley. I raised a hundred trees in my yard, and I wanted to donate to this town, they wouldn't take them. So I gave them away to other towns and to other people. And then, just mentioning about the stadium, we were against that. I was not against the stadium, I was against you doing all that work up there and not putting a track in, which was absolutely crazy, because then I heard later on, we should put a track in. So I have never been against everything in this town.
Your husband said that that stadium will collapse in two years.
What?
Your husband said that that stadium...
No, my husband didn't say that, you did not.
Yes, he did.
You are a liar, and I'm gonna say right now, you're a liar. He had never said that. He's the one who wanted to say, you're a liar. We were, you're a liar, and I'll tell you that all the time.
Okay, Mr. Green, but I'm a liar.
You are a liar.
I'm a liar.
He never said that.
Yes, he did.
No, he did not, and I'll debate you on that anytime you want.
I don't want to debate you.
Well, then don't, just keep your mouth shut, I don't know what you're talking about.
He did say it, Mr. Grandin, sorry.
Yeah, that's, she's accurate, that told me untrue, because, because...
You were for the stadium, you were for the, you were for the field, you were for the turf field. You were for all of that.
Mr. Kimball...
Wait, answer my question, please.
What?
You were for all of that, wasn't you?
Not the turf field, no.
What?
Why? Because, and I told you before, so you could open your mouth, and all behind that is air, but you know me and my camera, I have all the before and after pictures from when I took office to when I left, to when I left office. That field, that grass field, was working perfectly, the sprinklers were working, and that field was...
What about the J.B. field that used to flood every time, like, it looked like...
Mr. Kimball, you were born and raised in Belleville. If you would look at the specs, that was like Roadbrook Mall, the parking lot was designed as a retention. Why don't you listen? Maybe that's why you don't know what you're talking about, because you don't listen.
That's what you do.
All right?
That, that practice field was designed as a retention basin. Why don't they allow it?
You know how many millions were spent there?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And don't tell me, because in nineteen eighty-nine, the Hundred and Fiftieth, that entire stadium was rehabilitated with town personnel. Every bathroom was working, and as Mr. Kennedy, he was on the Hundred and Fifty Committee. Every bathroom, the concession stand was in perfect condition. And don't tell me I already said it collapsed, because...
Nobody's up, nobody uses our equipment, and I told her that, I, come up and see how many kids use them fields.
I never said that, I never... You are speaking out of, of, you don't know what you're talking about.
You know, you make these statements, you make these statements, we're against everything, you know?
So I didn't make a commercial up there with the Giants, okay?
Yeah.
When he was in office.
The field was so great, they, Roll Age called us up to do a commercial at that field, because it was one of the most beautiful fields in Nettson County, and that was on suburban cable division. And they dressed up our field with a drap to make it look like Giant Stadium. So that's how great our stadium was, they...
What's my winner now?
What?
What's my winner now?
You know, you brought, you brought up, you brought up, you said that I was against it. You said, you said that I said the stadium was falling down in two years.
Yeah, you did. The stadium will fall down.
Why you...
The field will, the field will collapse.
What are you talking about? No, it did, it did, it did. When they put the initial pipe, you weren't in, you weren't in office, Mayor.
Oh.
You were not in office, Mayor, and when they did that original thing, what was the failure on that? Do you remember what failed? Oh, you know, that's what I'm talking about. So what would you say? Because that original thing, that all the fill they put, remember they reached, it's called surcharging the field? Remember that? They brought in three, four feet of fill. That's when I said it wouldn't work, because as a trustee of the St. Bourbon Coalition, we had experience in, and that failed, Mayor.
I'm sorry for debating you, because I know you can't be wrong.
Because, well, I got the proof, and he's left the room. Councilman Kennedy has spent days and hours in the clerk's office going all over the resolutions when I was in office, trying to find something wrong that I did, he can't find anything. But I was for keeping the William Street Garage. And that property, that property could have been excellent senior citizen. But you, Mr. Mayor, and the council sold it for a mere seventy thousand after we did tax base pay for it all. And guess what happened? You were gonna get Ford...
William Street? It had nothing to do with William Street, it's long gone.
The William Street Garage, you guys...
We did not sell it, you said we sold it, we didn't sell it.
You subvined and sold them four lots for seventy thousand apiece.
William Street Garage?
The garage.
William Street Garage.
Keep it up, it's different.
William Street Garage, that was an excellent... So you, you sold it, you were gonna have four, two family houses, within two years, it went back, we had it foreclosed.
We auctioned it off, right?
It's a tax sale, right? What happened? Where's the fourth housing down there, all right? Three eighty-three Washington Avenue. The town spent a hundred and forty thousand for architect plans to convert it to a civic center. I was for that. What happened? The council, whether it was you or the previous one, sold it for a mere two hundred and eighty thousand to a select employee, right? I was for the senior citizen housing on Courtland Street. That was a scam, it never got, I testified to zone board, for, that never got done. The Friendly House, look what you did, I was for renovating the Friendly House. I got all the plans, and I spoke on what could be done for a mere six to seven hundred thousand when you had it, right? And there was been, and now how many, six, seven years, we don't have a Friendly House? We're doing an office, and now we, how do you go out and build a building without allocating money for parking lot and sidewalks, right? School one, I was for school one, right? Newtown Hall, I was for the Newtown Hall if you save the existing one. And when you were deputy chief, and I took over, you remember your office, it wasn't your fault, it was the way you kept it, the rug was stained, cigarette burns, wrinkled up, it smelled like hell. Within two weeks, why had the men rip it out? You had all new tiles in there, vinyl tiles, the whole town hall was cleaned within three months. So don't tell me I'm always against that. And now...
Except the asbestos.
These, look, that was brought up once before, it was front page headlines by another incompetent official, and then I went to the newspaper with the contract, with the final approval and the state approval. And the next week, it was front page headline, which says that the council project tank was wrong. The asbestos was done, you were a policeman at the time.
Yeah.
The whole town hall was cordoned off, there were vacuum trucks in the backload, you could not go in the parking lot, you had to come in the front, these asbestos was taken out, Mr. Mayor.
I'll bring it up, I did save that newspaper order, going to asbestos.
Yeah, but you didn't save the next week's paper, where it showed that the contract. Go get the next week's paper, Mr. Mayor, you know, you should select it when you save what you want. Now, and also, in two thousand six, Vinnie Frantantoni was for Kimball and Kennedy. In fact, on a Friday night before election, a couple weeks before...
You keep bringing that up, we issued help with the budget.
You called me and my wife, we were shopping, we said, come on over, we need help with the budget. I spent the whole... I spent the whole weekend going over the budget, showed you how to cut three hundred thousand, what'd you do? You approved the same degory budget and gave us a huge.
I want to tell you how, how he wanted to save three hundred thousand, okay? I want to tell the people.
Yeah, go ahead.
Cut employees.
No, it wasn't.
And that's so easy.
No, I trust you, you're not.
That's why, that's why you deserve the word liar. Because you should sit down, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. In addition to going over the budget for you, I wrote a press release for you. That press release showed how to take money, the next morning, Monday morning, Mr. Kennedy went to the printer and had exactly word for word. What you were going to do, the seven point one million dollar surplus, I said, take just half of that surplus and cut taxes three hundred dollars. Kevin Kennedy says, that's great, Ray, I'll go to a printer tomorrow morning. I had all printed out, he still have a copy of it, he had a printed the next one. That's how I was going to cut, not cutting employees.
Okay.
All right?
He's a liar.
And now, the.
Last thing.
On the budget.
Okay, on the budget.
I mean, on the, on the agenda, resolution nine and ten. Again, why are you hiring attorneys for disciplinary actions? Uh, I had twelve disciplinary actions when I was in office, I handled them myself. Now, are these disciplinary actions so wrong and, and so outrageous that the employee is filing suit, and then we have to hire outside attorneys? I don't understand, like I said, dozen grievances were filed against me. And I, in fact, the town attorney a couple of times, what, ten thirty tomorrow morning, I'll be there, I said, I don't need you there, I can defend myself.
We want to make sure there's no conflict of interest where the, our attorney representing the town takes the part of the town and not the other.
And now with that, Mr. Frantantoni, what, what happens is there are, there are many, many employee issues that are resolved, precisely as you said. But not all of them can be, so when they can't be, then we have to bring out.
Well, it's an awful lot. And finally, I just want to welcome Mr. Longo to the council, and I thank you for exercising due diligence on going over the municipal budget. Had you done that with the Board of Ed, maybe we wouldn't have had a four million dollar bill of deficit.
All right. I enjoy going.
You like that, right? If I'm on your side, you love me.
He hangs one garden to terrace.
I'm sorry?
He hangs garden to terrace, okay, same subject. It's a couple of months now since I first contacted Colleen. I remember our first conversation, I mentioned the weeds were almost to my knees. My latest conversation, I told her, they were as tall as I am, five foot tall, nothing has been done.
Yeah, they, they sent him letters, he hasn't answered the letters. In fact, I think there's a bench warrant out for him. They sent him like six letters or so.
Okay, because it was interesting, because Colleen said something about, oh, I guess we're going to have to penalize him. And I thought, well, I, why hasn't he been penalized in months ago?
I think he was ordered to go to court, Chris Hank said, and he didn't show up, so I think there's a bench warrant.
He must be a lousy neighbor then.
Well, he misses that's the thing.
We're going to have to put up with him?
He misses that's the thing.
Okay, so what's going to happen?
Well, probably what's going to happen in the end is the town's going to have to go up there and cut.
Would they have done that already? Should they have done that already?
And put a clean to lean on it. Well, Kevin will have to check that tomorrow.
No, but in the past, they used to send those, those bad kids, and they used to, you don't want to talk about.
My friends, second chance.
No, those kids that were being punished for.
Right, second chance. Second chance, second chance.
Yeah, that's them, and they used to come, and then they'd cut the lawn, and somehow it got, you know, the person responsible had to pay for it somehow. They didn't do anything like that this year, why not?
Kevin should check on it tomorrow, and if the guy has bench warrant out for him, Kevin should send public works up, cut the grass, and just put a clean to lean on it.
Right. You know, there's seven private homes, and then ninety-six families in the apartments, and we all have to look at that every day.
Do you all have lawnmowers?
Every, every week, and I pay my bill monthly, every single week. And I should mention that Grogan is not taking care, the mental health is, they have done a good job. But Grogan is not doing his side of the fence, and the condos down at the end are not doing theirs. So in addition to that beginning of Carpenter, that's really the bit, I mean.
Did you tell Kevin to look at that?
They're not, it's not grass anymore, it's weeds.
Kevin's taking notes.
All right.
Okay, I see him writing, thank you, Kevin. Okay. Oh.
No.
One last thing, they're going to do something, you've got Carpenter, uh, street, okay, it's, right now it's concrete, will they replace it with concrete? I hope.
No.
No? I prefer that.
Hi, Tishewell's eight Beach Street, to go back to her subject, I have a list of about nine houses in this town that are boarded. How long does it take the town to either clean up these houses, sell them, do something with them? Because it's bringing our property taxes down, I mean, it's a disgrace, big, big, big boards, and then the grass is sky high. I have them on my camera, they're a disgrace to our town. I mean, you either have to go into the homeowner, to the bank, to somewhere, because they're not being put up for sale. I mean, how long do these people have to leave them blank, to leave them vacant? And then they get worse, broken windows, vines climbing up the sides, bushes out of control. I mean, who wants to live next to it? You know?
You know, I agree with you, but I don't know, all, all I can say, if the construction company signed a complaint against them, and they're trying to get them into court or not, that, that I don't know.
Bring your list up to.
Yeah, Kevin, the list.
Oh, I have a list. This is just me riding around, around town, it's about mine. I, I got a flat tire the other day on Harrison Street, there's a half, I got a therapy over there, there's a half constructed brick, just thrown in a, in a pile there with a bunch of dirt. Come down Harrison Street, I get a big nail on my tire, had to go to Costco's today and get a fix. And it's, it's, it's just not, they're not moving on it, it's a vacant lot with just bricks there. I mean, there's a house across the street that was just bought, that they're working on now because that was a short sale. But there's tons and tons of houses in this town that are not being utilized, and they're just going apart. And the more they sit for years, the worse they get.
I, you know, I agree, once you, once they're foreclosed on, it's very difficult to get them cleaned up.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Give Kevin a list, we'll see if, if they're on that list.
You know, and then you're, you're making the townspeople clean them up, that's taking away from other stuff that they could be doing in town. Okay? And you're sending out bills to these people that are probably not getting paid because they couldn't care less.
Well, we put a lean on it then, we put a lean on it.
You know? Yeah, but then we're waiting for years to get our money back because the properties aren't being sold.
Yes.
You know, and then who wants to move in town? Oh, they see this house boarded up with big block numbers on it, I mean. You know, really, okay, thank you.
It's a statewide problem, they just passed a new statute to help us a little bit, you know? Just, and I mean, if it were just us, I mean, we passed a couple of statutes, but in, in this case, the state actually passed one to try to help us to get to the banks faster, to put some pressure on them, because they, you know, they don't care, they really don't.
These houses, and I know that somebody's house is empty four or five years, because there's one right next to my cousin, that they broke, took all the pipes out of it, broke all the windows.
Took the copper.
Yeah, you know?
They had a problem with that in Silver Lake, too, with a couple of houses.
Nothing like hired private landscapers because their public works department can't handle the other floor, and they don't have as many abandoned homes as we have here. Recently published in the, in the.
But how come we don't see theirs boarded up?
No, we do see that they're boarded up, if you drive past the home on Graylock, which was scheduled to close, unfortunately, the deal fell through. So our crew went out there, and they boarded up the home, and they secured and cleared the property, and now we place a lien against the property. In some cases, we make up the attempt to contact the attorneys. In the case of that particular property, and also the home on Jefferson, the attorneys basically said, we no longer represent the property owner. The bank abandoned their lien, or they went to court, there was a list pending filed against the property, and when they went into court, they went before a judge, they were able to remedy the foreclosure, and tell the judge, listen, we're going, we're going to arrange to pay off the mortgage. And if they did that, now they get the property, and they have to inherit the lien that's against the property, and they have to make remedy. But sometimes our, our municipal court issues a bench warrant out, and then in some cases, the police department aren't successful in, in apprehending the individuals.
You know, I mean, a lot of these houses are nice little houses that somebody would probably want, but once they stay in decay for four or five years, nobody wants them because there's nothing left to them but the shell of the house. So then you have to get a contractor in there and take the, everything out of it, you know, and start fresh.
Oh, you want to finish? Okay.
Are your motion closed, public?
Why don't you say, you go.
Are your motion closed?
Second.
Councilmember Cusaral? Kennedy?
Yes.
Deongra?
Yes.
Natarri?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Trumwobber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Make your motion, move to the center of the panel.
Second. Number eight.
I'll just number eight, I have a couple of questions. Quick little voting, can send again, Matt.
Councilmember Cusaral?
Yeah.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natarri?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Trumwobber?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes, resolution of the rating. Move it.
Second.
No, no, number eight, hold on, I have a comment to make. In connection with, this vendor contacted me and advised that he had performed some services. Uh, I, I wouldn't call them extensive services for two members of the governing body, that I would ask to recuse themselves. And normally I wouldn't do it if it were something like shoveling snow or something like that in the past, but, you know, I think really a recusal would probably be the better way to go.
Don't ask me, I'm not a lawyer.
I'm sorry?
Don't ask me, I'm not a lawyer.
Well, I would recommend it, I, you know, I would, I would recommend that both Councilwoman Burke and Councilwoman Natarri consider recusing themselves in this particular vote.
I'm not going to recuse myself because when Mr. Sheldon volunteered to do a small website, he was never paid, and no monies were ever exchanged or anything like that, so I don't see why I have to recuse myself.
Okay, Councilwoman, do you have some question on this?
Yeah, I got a few questions. Mr. Murphy, you, and you're the person who is proposing this, I don't understand, could you just tell me how that, why you're the?
This, this, actually, my name is on it, but this was a proposal that came into the manager, the manager provided to me, I directed the resolution. First request.
The proposal is dated August fourth, was received in the, in town hall on the sixth, and it's on the agenda today. Was, was this part of an RFP, or did this?
Was it part of what?
An RFP?
No.
Because there was an RFP put out back, that was due on January nine, twenty fourteen, did this person also respond to that RFP?
No, this is not a response to the RFP, uh, this is for professional services, it's under the bid threshold, the governing body is permitted to do it, and I believe that actually the last resolution in two thousand and eleven, prior vendor, was not pursuant to an RFP, uh, but it was under the bid threshold, so it was handled that way, so this is being handled, yeah.
Was, was a specification given out?
No.
Uh, is the person being considered a company or an individual?
An individual, to best of my knowledge.
Has he ever done any municipal websites?
I, I have no, I do not know, all I know is that I'm told he has, I'm not a techie, uh, so I'm told that he has considerable expertise in this particular field.
In the field of websites or municipal websites?
Websites.
Because, um, he talks in here about using some of the other town websites as sort of templates, my word, not his, to do that. Who, who was in charge of reviewing the proposal, was there like any committee technology or anything, or did it just send it in?
There was no bidding, there was no bidding, there was.
No, I said, who, who reviewed his proposal? Was there, was there a committee or just?
No, it wasn't.
But the manager was on vacation, was he?
It's under the bid, bid threshold, the proposal was submitted to the manager.
But the manager was on vacation.
No, the manager was not on, Mr. Longo, the manager was not on vacation, I sat at his desk with him reviewing the proposal, unless he has the power of by location, so I don't know what you're suggesting here, sir.
I'm just asking, I am.
No, you're not, Mr. Longo.
Excuse me, Mr. Murphy, I am asking.
Excuse me, Mr. Longo, I know exactly.
No, you excuse me, you will not raise your voice at me.
No, I will.
You will not raise your voice to me.
Yes, I will.
You are an employee, you are not elected to this council.
You're an employee, Mr. Longo.
You are an employee of the town, you will not.
You're an employee, Mr. Longo, and this isn't the Board of Education.
Now, let's get back, let's get back to my time on the floor, I would like to speak to you.
You did not ask, Mr. Longo, you said, now did the manager discuss this with me personally when he was on vacation?
That is not what I asked.
That's exactly what you asked.
Okay, that is not what I said.
Exactly what you asked.
That is not what I asked, because I'm working from no. Well, I mean, I would like to.
Let's cut it out, let me ask the question.
I didn't, I, my questions are now, my questions, per the town attorney, are now going to be towards the manager, because the manager's the boss. I asked, who reviewed his proposal and, or interviewed this website guy?
The manager did, before he went on vacation.
I don't understand, what, why is there no order to these meetings?
We're not discussing the education.
I didn't, this is not about the board.
Of course, that's fine.
I think I deserved the opportunity to ask questions, since I can't get a meeting.
Can I answer the question?
I don't know.
Joe, move, uh, excuse me.
I'm trying.
Joe's the expert, so he thinks.
To answer your question, Mr. Murphy's statement is one hundred percent accurate. While I was on vacation, the memo provided to the council stated my vacation schedule, which began on Wednesday, August sixth, and ended yesterday, and returns to town hall. So this proposal referenced dates, August fourth, I was in my office, Mr. Murphy and I reviewed.
But the proposal is stamped that it was received August sixth. See, right here at the very top? Upper right, upper left corner?
Maybe whoever had the stamp had the wrong date.
Or maybe it came in on the sixth.
It doesn't say received by August.
Where's the US report?
I couldn't tell you, but I can tell you that I reviewed, I reviewed the proposal in my office on the fourth, when I was here.
All right, well then. It's interesting, okay. What is the seventeen thousand dollars for? Is it for the middle of August to December? Is it for building a new website? What exactly is it?
I believe it's for building the website and servicing it through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Bill does not have, own its own website, and that's what the township wanted to accomplish. Actually, this was something that has been discussed informally on a number of occasions.
Uh, if this were to, to go through, um, starting on January first, I presume that we would then have a new website. Who would be managing the new website?
Well, that will be up to the governing body on January first, it'll be the subject of a new resolution.
What, Mr. Espizito?
Yes.
What do you anticipate?
Well, it's a pride that the current website is not owned by the municipality, and it's our goal, I believe, the goal of the council, to own the website. That's what this proposal reflects, to have an updated website that the municipality owns. At that point in time, when the website is completed, we can explore options on how we wish to maintain the website, whether it be through the employees who are knowledgeable, okay, through an outside service, or perhaps Mr. Sheldon, where to also submit a proposal to provide services to the municipality to maintain the website on a monthly basis. But the difference is that we will then own the website that we host, we own the domain name, we own the website. The only current, the only monthly changes would be whether there would be photos that we wish to add, the different information that departments wish to link to the website or add to the website, that's, that will be the difference.
Do, do we know what the hosting and licensing fees and software costs are going to be? And, and I presume, the way I read it, it will be in addition to the seventeen thousand.
You are correct, it will be in addition to, and we will look for the most effective deals on the hosting and on the licensing fees for any software products that are required.
I see something about online bill payments. Uh, I see, uh, something about online bill payments. Um, does the township currently have merchant service agreements that, that they can take credit cards and online payments?
No, we do not, but we, through the admin system, through the tax office, we are hoping to incorporate into the new website the ability to have online tax and motor payments.
So those would be the only services that we would allow, not like licenses and fines?
Well, eventually we would like to get licenses. Um, if someone receives a violation, they can go to the state website. The Division of Motor Vehicles Office, an online portal which any resident or anyone who receives a violation can go to that website, um, and make a payment. We will provide a link to that website on the new website that we're going to, that hopefully will be created.
Um, this vendor would like the township to buy a camera if we wanted to take pictures.
Just buy on us.
And also, uh, purchasing software. So the software to build the site sounds like it's not included. And the vendor wants the township to buy a camera that he can use to take pictures. Um, will there be an additional cost for him to go out and take pictures?
Initially, no. If we elect to use his services going forward, there could be.
The biggest problem is that this proposal says that he will manage the present website until the new one is made. If he does, if we as a township don't own it, how will that be possible?
It might have to be amended. I'll be the one who owns the website, so.
Obviously, yeah. It's current website, that'd be on, so that's, that's a bit of a problem.
All right, that's all I have.
I think a motion ruled a resolution.
Second. Uh, you have to take that word again. Tom. Tom? You're gonna have to take that word again as a resolution.
Which one?
You can't manage the current website.